I'm very close.
Tested? Mr. Gorilla? Yes? Ms. Zuzinski?
Yes.
This is the motion to allow the women to participate virtually. Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Ms. Goode? We have one question, no one else is here, so we have a motion now. And I'm giving a couple minutes to give them.
So I'm sorry for the technical issues. We're gonna avoid using our mics at the moment until we get someone to fix it. We do have a few presentations today.
I'm gonna use my cafeteria voice. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the office board meeting. Prior to beginning the board meeting, I would like to formally introduce Dr. Melissa Simmons, who is our interim DA over to my right. So I'd like to welcome our official members. Also, as you know, board members, Ms. Morris, Ms. Carol Morris, the state monitor. The state has transitioned her to another location. We'll be receiving our new state monitor next week in conversation with the deputy commissioner, Dr. Christopher Irving. He informed us of that change about last week. And so the new individual, we have a meeting set up for Monday. The head of president will get a link invite for their virtual meeting to do a transition introduction meeting. Questions and so forth. As it is in August, we don't have any presentations other than we'll hold off in September for our teacher recognition for Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year. And you all should have gotten your update of the Q Sac information, but that should be in your packet. I will make sure that you all get the final ratings from Q Sac. Mr. Rogers, do you have a question?
Yes.
Fact?
No, fact.
No, it's not a fact. It's just a one sheet with the schools. So to give you a quick overview, anything with under an 80% would require a district improvement plan, which is the DIP. Our only area below 80% is in instructional programming, and that's connected to our state assessment scores. We had a 96 in finance, 88 in, no, excuse me, governance, 84 in personnel, and 81 in operations. So all of those are passing scores. And the only one that we have to provide by October 23rd is a DIP for instructional programming. And that's been consistent over the last, since Q Sac has arrived at Asbury Park. Question? So let me go on to say a 96 in finance is stellar. Anything again above an 80 is exceptional, but a 96 in finance is stellar. Also, we did reach out to the city for our second phase meeting. We're still waiting to get confirmation on the date and time with them. And hopefully, we were trying to do that before September. So we'll wait to hear back from them as I indicated in my email to the board. And lastly, there was an article in State Asbury Park Press which highlighted our use of our HESR funds, our $14 million renovations and program improvements, excuse me, clean improvements from each school of our building. There are some tremendous photos in Asbury Park Press along with some moving comments.
Yeah, Dr. Penner, this is Zach saying it goes out to the lady.
That's good.
That's good.
Testing? Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here tonight. I hope everybody's been having a good and healthy summer and a safe summer. And I was asked to, my name is Mary Ann Friedman. I'm your field service representative from New Jersey School Boards. And the board has once again completed their annual board self-evaluation. And this is really the opportunity for the board to take a look and really self-assess how they've done as individual board members, how they feel they've done as an individual board member, and how they feel the board has done over the course of the year. So everybody has in their packet the actual self-evaluation and then charts, which I'll go over last. But wanted to just point out a couple of things. We consider any average score to be, that's a 3.0 or above, to be a board that's working well and effectively together. Okay? You'll also see some blackened-out comments. Those are because the board is only authorized to evaluate the superintendent, but that is done in the superintendent's evaluation, not in the board's self-evaluation. So anything that's evaluative or perceived to be, could be perceived as evaluative of the superintendent or any other staff member, I highlight those comments for every district that I work with, all 87 of them. And I send those, I highlight those, I send them back to the board president and ask the board president to have, forward it to the board attorney so that they can review it. Because I'm not the arbiter of what's necessarily evaluative or not. I point out the areas that I feel could possibly be. And so those were sent to Ms. Cook. She sent them to Mr. Weiss. Okay, to Mr. Weiss, who's the board attorney. And he concurred with my assessment that those should be blackened out. So that's why you'll see some areas that are blackened out. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're negative comments. It could also mean that they're positive comments. But evaluative is evaluative. And so that's why for the board's protection, those have been blackened out. So the first thing that we ask you to do in the board's self-evaluation is look at the quantification of relative value. And that's the first page. And what we do is we ask you to look at each of those nine areas that we're asking you to evaluate yourselves in and mark down how important you feel they are to your boardsmanship. So four is vital, three is very important, two is somewhat important, one is not important, and zero is, and zero is not observed. Not observed throughout this process, throughout this evaluation tool does not count positively towards anything, nor does it count negatively. It's a non-entity. So when we look at those scores and we're averaging them out, anything that's in the not observed does not count then when you add up the totals and you divide by the number of people who have completed the assessment. Okay? Got it? Okay. So planning was a 3.9, policy was a 4.0. That was the highest thing that you rated. Student achievement was also one of the highest things that you rated, and the rest fell in right after that. So it's planning, policy, student achievement, finance, board operation, board performance, board superintendent relationships, board staff relationships, and board and community. Those are the nine things we ask yourself, we ask you to evaluate yourselves on. So then if you flip to the second page, the first area is planning. And again, anything that's a 3.0 or above in the ratings and the averages, we feel is a board, we recognize as a board that's working effectively together. So anything that's above an average is considered a relative strength, and anything that's below a 3.0 is considered an opportunity for growth. And I know that you've had conversations before in the past about possibly using strategic planning to try and engage your community in the development of district goals and strategic planning goals and things like that. That might be something that you may want to consider moving forward. Doesn't necessarily have to be through NJ SBA, but we do have strategic planning, two different strategic planning processes that you could use. But a relative strength was regularly monitoring the progress towards achieving the district's vision and mission and goals. I also never go through the comments when I'm presenting this because I really feel it's important for each board member to take a look at those comments. And if there are any issues that have been brought up in the comments, to really think, ask yourself, excuse me, to ask yourself if you feel you're contributing to the issue in a negative way or are you conjuring up beating by your behavior to try and rectify that issue? So those are the things that I ask you to do as you look forward and you look through the comments on your own time. Policy was also an area you had relative strengths in, operating as a policymaking body, reviewing and updating the policy manual, and ensuring that administration develops appropriate procedures and regulations to implement those policies. Those were all areas of relative strength. And I wanted to, do you have, I know you work with policies. Do you have a policy committee? Okay. How many committees do you have? Five or six? I'm hearing? Okay. Okay, but five, five committees then, five standing committees? Okay. And does the policy committee meet on a regular basis? Okay. So that should, one of the things that you want to look at in policies is what's being recommended as mandates or updates to your policies for revision and really looking at those because sometimes people take a look at the policies, whether they come from us or whether they come from Stress Esme. Do you use Stress Esme? Okay. But there are things within those policies that you have to make decisions on. So it's not just approving those new policies. There are things in there that you have to make decisions on as to whom is responsible for certain things, things like that. So I want you to really make sure that you're going through those policies and not just blanketly revising them and approving them without making those assignments of anything that needs to be altered in there, okay? Or selected in there. Okay? The next thing we ask you to evaluate yourselves on is student achievement. And this was an overall strength. And discerning the district educational goals with input and from, and data from administration, using the expertise of your professional staff in the development of that curriculum and ensuring that it is focused on student achievement and monitoring the effectiveness of your instructional program. So those were all areas of strength for you. Any questions so far? Okay. Getting into finance, there were relative areas of strength in here, providing policy guidelines and parameters related to the goals and also balancing the educational needs of the students with the impact of the budgetary impact and increases. And I wanted to point out that number three, requiring that all requests for unbudgeted items are represented with where that money is coming from, what line item it's coming from, and why it's able to come from that line item. That's something that the board can ask of the, of the business administrator, is to denote that in your minutes or in your agenda, where the money is coming from. It's often coming from someplace that was possibly overestimated on or, and going into someplace that might have been underestimated on. A lot of times, benefits is one of those areas that things have to go to because sometimes they're underestimated when you get your estimates from your insurance brokers. But those are things that you can certainly request to ask where that money is coming from and where it's going to. Board operations, there were also areas of relative strength in here, holding your meetings in compliance with applicable statutes, policies, and bylaws, providing a climate that allows for free, open, and orderly discussion, acting only after administration has been given time to make recommendations, respecting the administration's leadership by thoughtfully deliberating on, deliberating on those recommendations, and also providing time, funding, and opportunity for professional development for board members. So those were areas that were relative, of relative strength. One of, two of the areas, number three and number four, those are opportunities for growth for you in terms of team building. And those are some things that I can work with you on in the future if you would like to. And I know that we're trying to get you board certified. That was one of the things that I know you were interested in doing. And so I'm thrilled that you have two people here virtually tonight that couldn't be here in person because that will count. So you will get credit for tonight's program, which is great. And I will send you an email tomorrow, Ms. Cook, letting you know exactly how many credits you have towards the certification. Okay? And then the reason that I asked about the committee structure was because it seemed to be opportunities for growth within that committee structure. So that's something we can also talk about. And I can come in and talk to you about effective committees. And we also have a three, a master, a three master committee system that we recommend. Boards either love it or they do not like it at all. And it's completely up to you as to whether you wanted to hear about it or whether you wanted to try it. But it's something that really does lessen the total work of all board members because each board member sits on one committee. So you have nine board members. You would have three people on three committees. There's education, which is curriculum and instruction and special ed. There's also human resources, which covers personnel at a very high level. You're not looking at applications or going through resumes or anything like that. You're looking at what the needs are of the district in terms of additional staff maybe or lessening staff in some cases. And then you're looking at job descriptions within that. You can also look at legislation. That can be part of, of your legislation committee in human resources. And then you have your operations committee, which looks at buildings and grounds, transportation, and athletics. And at the buildings, the operations committee is usually the administrative liaison to that, is usually the business administrator for H R or for human resources. It's usually your director of H R or could be your superintendent. And then for curriculum and instruction or the education committee, that could be the superintendent as well. So each board member sits on one committee. And then there's a fourth chair that can be occupied by somebody who would like to be a part of that particular meeting. So the agendas would go out to everybody. And if you're not on that committee, but if you were driven to want to be there for that discussion, for something that was being brought up in that particular committee on that particular day, you would be able to call the chairperson and say, "I'd like to sit in as the fourth chair" if there's nobody already sitting in there because you know you can't have more than four people on a committee or you have a quorum. So that's one of the ways that it works. So it allows people really to visit other committees while only being on one committee. So it does lessen the work of each board member. Did you have a question?
Yes.
So are you going for the mic?
Yes. So you were saying that you can call the chairman for that committee and say that you want to be part of that committee for that day?
Yep. It's first come, first served.
First come, first served.
Yeah, so if somebody else called before you.
I always assumed like they were locked, like whoever.
The three people would be locked in.
Yeah, but I guess that we are structured is, it just shows like someone is like, um, I forgot the word, but it's just, huh? Alternate, yes. So I thought the alternate was locked. I didn't know the alternate can alternate.
Well, I don't know what you're, what you use for your structure.
Okay.
In the three master committees that we talked about.
So you're saying ours, well, we can do that then?
We can definitely do that.
That's what I'm getting from you.
You would have to take a look at your policy and your bylaws.
You can definitely do that.
Okay.
You just gotta call and ask. As long as we don't have it, the quorum, we're good.
I always thought alternate was locked. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then each, everybody, so everybody gets the agenda. Every board member gets the agenda, and every board member gets the minutes from those committee meetings. So it gives you the opportunity then, when you get your packet, whether it's electronic or whether it's in paper, to be able to look through those committee minutes if something's on the agenda and be able to see how it got to the board agenda from the committee. Okay? Because they would have done their due diligence in recommending that it come to the board table. So it's just something to think about and something I can talk to you about at greater length if you would like. Okay? The next section is board performance. And there were a couple of areas in here that were relative strength, recognizing that authority rests with the board as a whole, sitting in a legally advertised meeting with a quorum of the board, and also operating in accordance with the code of ethics. Okay? There were also some areas, opportunities for growth there, numbers two through, through six. And those are things that we can work on together if I, if you want me to come in and talk about team building and things like that. So that's something that we could always work on. Okay? The next area is board superintendent relationships. And there were areas of, relative areas of strength in here, conducting comprehensive and fair evaluation of the superintendent as pertaining statute and code. Also working with the superintendent to perform, to develop performance objectives for the evaluation and requiring regular dialogue on progress towards the district goals. So those are things that I know we talked about when we did the retreat earlier in the year. And it sounds like that has made a positive impact. So hopefully, that has done that. And then one, two, and three were opportunities for growth as well. And again, those are things that we could talk about further. Board staff relationships, this was also had areas of relative strength, recognizing the importance of staff development and providing the necessary funds for that and time for your staff and providing for public recognition of staff. And I know that you do that on a regular basis because I've been here when you've done that before. And you do that quite well. The last is board and community. And this was also had relative strengths, encouraging community involvement in the district and also promoting the use of the school facilities. So those were two areas of strength. The last thing that we ask you to do is to identify three areas that you feel are major issues that are facing the district. And so you can see that there's a bunch there. What I did was I usually take these and I try and drop them into buckets. So there was budget and finances as you're an S2 district, and I know that that's always an issue. And I also know that the board also wants to understand the development of the budget more and things like that. So that's an area that you might want to have additional training on. And then the other area is focusing on students, student achievement, raising test scores, not representing outside interest groups was mentioned, and the board's divisiveness. If the board is divided, that can really impact in a negative way your student achievement. You have to think of yourselves as modeling for your community and for your students, the way you behave at meetings, the way you act at meetings, and the way you ask questions and things like that. And then also parent and community involvement was also an issue, a major issue that you felt was coming up, which again, a strategic plan could really help to engage your parents and your community member, community members. We see a lot of people come out for strategic planning. And again, NJ SBA has a process for that. You don't have to use our process to do it. You can use another process. But those were the three big areas. And then we ask you to, what specific areas of board governance you would like to have additional training on? And those areas were budget, roles and responsibilities, and what the board's focus should be, goal setting, and ethics. Okay? Any questions on the evaluation itself? Yes?
We seem to achieve well in a lot of, but a lot of these comments contradict what the achievements are.
All of this is what has been inputted into the evaluation. So if somebody's putting in, you know, that something is, is, the board is doing something very well, but then writes a negative comment, I don't, I have no idea whose comments are related to any one individual person. I don't look at that. I don't need to look at that, and I don't want to look at that. So I just compiled the evaluation. And seven of you did complete the evaluation. So I can't attribute any comments to any individual person.
Oh, no, not individuals, but.
Or even identify why somebody might have thought something was good and then have written something that was maybe not so positive. I have no way to, to comment on that.
So we basically, you can have these contradictory situations, but they can represent something else with the numbers.
They could. They could. So that's why I always say, you know, for the board members, I really want you to look through the comments and go over them and really ask yourselves if there are positive comments there. Am I contributing to the positivity of this particular issue? And if it's negative, am I participating in a negative way towards that issue by my behaviors? Because this is really, when you come to this table, it's really all about student achievement. And it needs to be about the students that come to Asbury Park. So you need, and you need to do what's in the best interest of all of the students in Asbury Park that come to your schools, not particular special interest groups or anything else like that. It's, and you may have individual special. And you may have individual special interest groups that you think about on a regular basis, but when you come in and sit down at this table for a board meeting with a quorum of the board at a legally advertised meeting, you need to do what's in the best interest of all of the students here in Asbury.
I'm trying to say one thing. This used to happen with the superintendent evaluation, until school boards changed their format where you had to make a comment. So I don't know if that's something they might, you might consider doing on this electronic evaluation, that at least it prompts you to make a comment. So if you...
You could still put an NA, though.
Well, that's true, you can, but you put NA, so...
Yeah. Yeah. So I wanted to go over the charts now. So the first chart takes a look at that value rating that you provided to your board rating. And we think of the value as what your expectations are, or what you feel your possibility is in each of those areas. And then the board rating is what you feel your performance is in each of those areas. So typically, we want to see those columns very close together. And you can see that in some areas, they are closer than others. Okay? And that just means that there's, there's opportunity for growth there. The second chart looks at the board's rating to the individual's rating. See, this is why it's hard to hold a microphone, I'm flipping pages. So the board rating is in the dark blue, the individual rating is in the yellow, and the board ratings in all nine areas were actually less than the individual ratings, which lead me to feel that you all feel that you do better and are more skilled as individual board members than when you come together and work together as a board. Okay? That's something that I would like to see flipped, at least in those first five areas. The first five areas are your task areas. So from planning to board operations, those are your task areas. And that's where we typically see a board feeling that together they are better than they are as individuals. The last four areas, from board performance to board and community, those are the relationship areas. And people generally feel that they are better at relationships as an individual than they are as a group. So that's not, wouldn't be surprising at all. But in those first five areas, I'd like to see those, those numbers flipped. Okay? Which would indicate to me that you're feeling stronger as a group than you are as individual board members. And then the last chart is this year to last year, and last year's ratings were a little bit higher than this year's ratings. So I think there's, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for growth here, and I would be more than happy to come in and to talk to you about different ways that we can improve some of those areas that are opportunities for growth, so that you're working more together and you're functioning more as a team. Okay? Questions? Clear as mud? Say no. We don't want it to be clear as mud.
I just have one small question. Regarding the different scores in the various areas, is there like a mean, or kind of an average of all that?
Every board is different. So I often have boards that say to me, "Can you, can you compare us to other districts?" And I can't, because every district is different. And even, even from last year to this year, a board can be very different. And you can see that in this particular situation. Sometimes it's, the board feels that they've done better this year than the previous year, but if the same people aren't on the board, that's always going to change. So how many, you have three seats that are up in November. How many people do you have running? Two? Okay. And then a write-in probably.
Another six.
Oh, there are six people running for three seats? Okay. So you may have new board members in January also. And so that always changes the dynamic of the board. Anytime one individual person is new to the board, it changes the dynamic. And so that's when you really have to work together to try and welcome that person and onboard them, so to speak, to be able to let them know what the district is all about, provide them with an in-district orientation, which does not satisfy the mandatory training requirement, but will give them specific information about your particular district that can help them navigate, especially those first couple of months. And then what you need to know also is that with the new regulations, anybody new, brand new, in January needs to take new board member orientation within 90 days, three months. Okay? That I think will work in your favor, because any new board member will get their training in three months and have that opportunity to really grow and be a more effective board member. Instead, sometimes people wait until November or December to do it, and then they've been on the board essentially for almost a year before they get the training that the association and the legislature feel is important for them to have to sit at this table. Okay? Anything else?
Yes. When can you come in and teach us on how to run like an actual board? Well, not like a, you get what I mean?
So what I'll do is, Ms. Cook and I will, will talk about some dates and see when we can get some dates scheduled to come in.
Okay.
But thank you for, for being positive about that, and for wanting to do that. I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
It's always a pleasure to come in and talk to you guys, truly. Okay, I'm going to say goodnight then. Have a good evening. That baby is absolutely adorable. And I will see you all soon. Take care.
What's that?
Are you eager to go?
It's just a lie.
We're not doing all of it.
I'm not, I'm going to go, high level, high level stuff, so...
C2. Just to be safe. On paper, it's missing.
All right. Can I do buildings and grounds? Okay, great. Yeah, this is not my... Okay, so we had our buildings and grounds meeting August 17th, and we went through some of the ESER projects, kind of the updates on that. Federal government is allowing late liquidation for CRR, SA funds used for construction progress, projects that are experiencing delays, and...
I use my cafeteria voice, too. So an application must be completed and submitted to both the county office and the Department of Education. And there were a resolution authorizing that submission. Dr. Simmons followed up. She was able to give the county BA an indication that we didn't submit a request to extend the ESER deadlines. We currently have all the funds expended and covered. There was an update on some of the summer projects. Just really quick rundown. In MLK, there's an electrical shutdown of the MLB service head facility for August 17th. And it's going to turn back on tomorrow. And there's also going to be a schedule for the crew that will be required, firewalled at this point, be upgraded. There's asbestos abatement in certain rooms of the nurse's speaking guide, media center and the purpose room, flooring, might not be completed by the start of classes in September. Also, because of, of, should be related, furts are in the media centers also. A new kitchen hood system is being installed. There's some touch-ups on the secondary floor. Landscapers will be doing trimming and moving trees around the property that are either dead or at danger of falling, injured somebody. Bradley School, there's a rooftop unit that's being, that was installed to be fit. All rooms have to be HVAC units installed, and a new piping that they completed this week on the second floor. Landscapers are adding pathways to playground areas. And then fencing around the soccer field has once again been vandalized. The gate is, uh, vacant, it's a duck ground, and all the soaps are putting a lock on the, on the soccer field finally. Original repair goal was 7,800 to fix the fencing, and waiting for a new code to repair the damages and whatever that was originally quoted. So... Also, let's see, we've got, third, the new rooftop units delivered are on-site, they're waiting for a date for the crane to begin to install. There's no date yet for the new playground equipment, but the playground is still usable if they want to do it. At APHS, new asbestos floor abatement began on August 17th, on the floor that kind of buckled one of the rooms. There was demolition that's going to be in, old dust collectors moving basketballs around the electrical conduits. It may affect market, but we're going to inform you later in the session on that. Installation of new HVAC units on the college wing, the gymnasium, the boys' locker room will be included by next week. And there's installation of gas lines, media center renovation, and the cosmetology and license may not be ready for September class. Concerning, but sure we'll get more detail on that. We also discussed briefly the renewal or relocation of administrative offices, and then we spent time discussing the plan. It was recommended that since time is running short because of the fact that we'll relocate by the spring, that maybe the board can consider a special meeting to determine the final plan of the superintendent. So that's something that we can discuss, discuss that in the executive session with that board president. I think that would be good to set a special meeting date. It would just be on, executive session, it would be just on that, that also evaluation part. So, and that was it. That completes my...
So, Joe, and Ms. Simmons, are there, so how much cash do we have on for ESER? Do we still have on hand?
We, um, we have finalized using the Carissa money. So that went towards all of the HBAC projects that Mr. Guerilla just mentioned. We are on target to fully expend all of that money and not have to return it. And as I, as you mentioned, we don't have to do any extension for the liquidation period, because we'll have all that, all that spent, and also paid by the deadline. We did get the opportunity today, meet with the county BA, and she confirmed that information, so we are well on target.
The cosmetology room, what's the delay?
On the cosmetology, um, cosmetology room, it's still the ordering and the supply delays, especially since they had all the other projects going on this summer. So as time goes on, hopefully we'll get that, those products started and that project going as soon as school starts. And the hope is that hopefully, at the beginning of winter, that room will be available for usage.
Also, the way that the curriculum is structured, most of the re, the room restructuring will require water. And most of it is, at this particular point, between unit one and unit two, is much more theoretical. So the students aren't actually having more hands-on and needing the room to be configured in a way that needs those things. By the time we get to those units of study, the rooms should be ready for those students to undertake the lessons that require that room to be configured in that manner.
Also, Dr. Adams, just a point, have, we haven't hired a new cosmetology teacher, yeah, right?
Yeah, we hired a new cosmetology teacher. You're talking about allied health. Yes. So we had a candidate and actually was outbid by the individual's current district. We counter-offered. The individual decided to stay with their home district, so the actual posting will remain open. There's been something that we've been working on diligently since the other staff member resigned back in July.
So what are, so what are we going to do with that curriculum? Are we telling the students that they're going to go into it next semester, or it's not going to be on for this semester?
So the, nothing happens to the curriculum. The curriculum is in Rubicon. Curriculum is not, not being impacted. When we start talking about the students in the program, we're also looking at what other prerequisite courses that those students have to have. So that would be in an update. Presently, we're looking at scheduling. So I want to be very clear, we still will have an allied health program. However, we are, again, looking for a staff member, and the criteria now has been relaxed by the state. So we will have a larger pool of candidates that we can actually advertise for to fulfill that requirement.
Just wanted to make sure that with the playground over, over here on Bradley School, that it's just a suggestion on my part to reach out to the, to the folks who've had damage done, and they've emailed us and everything, just to see what could be done now that, now that the playground is locked, to make sure that we can now set up a system to make sure that, you know, that the playground itself, not just the fencing is taken care of, but that we can figure out a system of how to safely and securely open the playgrounds, so that way kids in the, in the community have a, you know, have a place to recreate themselves. But in a way where it's safe and secure for them, our property, other people's property. And I know it's an ongoing struggle, because you can't, you know, people are going to rip stuff open and whatever else, but I think it's, it's important that we try to be good neighbors to one another, not that we're not, but that we figure out a system that works for everybody, so...
So that's definitely, I want to thank you guys for sending that information regarding the gate. I think that since the development or the revitalization of that Bradley soccer field some time ago, that has always been a concern. It is one of the free, open spaces in this town where individuals can go to participate. And I do know that there are some concerns. We've gone through a litany of gating, repairs, holes, and the like. I am also reluctant on putting up trespassing signs just from the legal standpoint, given that this community has exceptionally limited recreational space. And I would hate to have the individuals on the soccer field arrested for trespassing because they are opting to engage in a recreational facility, I mean, activity on our facility. However, I do know that the impact that that has. So we did take precaution of locking the gate as well as the playground. And so there, we've also received a litany of concerns about keeping the playground open. Right? And so we can't do one and the other, because it becomes a contradiction. I think we've had to make the determination, given that if we open that space, we also open ourselves up to extreme liability with not having cameras and all of the other aspects to making sure that that area is safe, and that just... And I just want to kind of point back to the tragedy at Mount Vernon School in Newark, uh, where the gate was not locked and, um, three individuals lost their lives around that space. And so, um, again, I think that we have to be cognizant of, uh, just all of those things. And so, again, we did take the precaution of locking the gate and getting to repair the fence, uh, as well as locking the playground. Um, and I know that that's not going to be a popular decision, however, uh, right now we do not have the manpower or the resources to man twenty-four-hour cameras or things of that nature or, you know, um, custodian or safety officers. But the city themselves can, you know, support, and they have, um, with sending patrols around, around the area. But I think that that's something that needs to be, you know, fully understood and taken into consideration.
Uh, Dr. Adams, is there lighting, uh, timing lighting on that soccer field?
Um, I, I couldn't give you an accurate answer to that. I would have to get back to you.
No, there's no lighting on the field. It just comes from the building, so it's dark at night.
Yes, I, I went by there at eight-thirty, um, the other night to see what, what was what. And the, the adults that were using the playground at, you know, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, they had the headlights from their, their cars that were parked in the back of the back Bradley School, like the little alleyway over there. And, uh, they were using that, the headlights to, to do the game, which, I mean, I even did as a kid, you know? So, I, but that, that was the only lighting that was, that was available to, to them. Um, so, yeah.
Can we, can we, uh, talk about, you know, dusk when the lights go down? You know, we eliminate, uh, people being out there because that's what I was, I drove by there one time and I, it was lit up ungrasually. I didn't think to look at this years ago as to what the lighting situation was. And being out there at dark, we don't need anybody out there at dark on, on that field.
I would concur with that, and I think that that becomes the responsibility of the Asbury Park Police Department to, um, secure our school facilities, um, in their regular patrolling. Um, I have reached out to Sergeant, to, to the leadership in, in the department to make sure that they are doing an adequate patrolling, uh, in that area. Um, but, you know, again, what requests are made and what requests are filed through are completely horse of a different color. Um, but again, uh, we have our, um, new year meeting with the police department, um, and , um, you know, I will reiterate that, um, with a level of, uh, importance because I know that, um, as the wintertime comes, that becomes less of an issue, but during, you know, this time and as they like to say, um, the pre, post summertime months of summer, um, in September, you know, it still continues to kind of be an issue, particularly for the resident that lives on the backside of that, as well as for our cost that we incur for the repair of, um, of the fencing and, um, other resources to secure the field. Because that field has a, has a shelf life as well. And so, we also want to preserve that field for our students because at the end of the day, it is one of the very few open space in the city. Besides the beach, our school grounds are the only open spaces in Asbury Park. There are no parks, like true parks, like lots of trees and playgrounds and sandlots and jungle gyms and all of those things, okay?
Uh, I just got a question. Um, in regards to the playgrounds in general, not just this one, um, the ones that are locked, it takes cameras to keep them open, let's say, from like sunrise to sunset? Would it take cameras and I guess, um, maintenance staff to like clean up afterwards? That's what it would take?
Well, especially if it's our facility, we have to maintain cleanliness of it, so...
Cause like, only reason I'm saying, because there's, there's other, like, we have Bradley and then we have Third Good as well. Like Third Good, I feel as though been, been gated since I would jump in the fence. I mean, like, cause I used to play...
You're not a trust fence.
I used to, I used to play basketball back there when I was younger and then all of a sudden, like, right before like middle school, it just shut up. But like, so it takes cameras, cameras and maintenance staff to keep it open, just the playgrounds at least, from like sunrise to sunset, like especially on the summer?
It's not only, I, I think, once we begin to parcel, we begin to kind of find those reasons, those things, but we also have to look at the overall wear and tear and the overall upkeep and the durability of those facilities, when we also have to couple that with what our financial limitations are, right? We are not in the nineteen, you know, early nineties or late, late nineties for you or two thousand, right? I'm just talking to you, right? But, um, the monies that the district at that time was receiving from the state was a tremendous bounty. However, we're still looking at coming up this year, almost an eight million dollar cut, right? And so, when we look at what are our priorities, and we just had this presentation from New Jersey School Boards about putting the priority on our academic areas. So, yeah, we could try to find grants for security cameras, but we'll still have to pay maintenance for overtime, right? Um, we would still have, and I'm not expecting the maintenance crew to come in, you know, early to clean up from a Saturday event, right? And so, those are just other things that begin to weigh into the equation. Again, we are a great partner in this city to the residents. You know, um, you know, not that this is, Jesus fed thousands of people with two fish and five loaves, right? We're feeding thousands of people with two fish and five loaves in this town with our limited resources, right? Whether it's the A Y F that we just gave out thirty-four helmets to, right? Um, whether it's utilizing our baseball facilities for the Little League, whether it's utilizing our stadium for other paid, um, you know, participants, we are overextending our facilities. And it is gonna come out of cost. And we waive a lot of the fees for participation, um, to those who actually reside here. So, we're not recouping money, we're actually working within the boundaries of our own limitations with our staff, right? So, I just want to kind of give that context because it is important. It's not us being obstructionist to participating with the community, right? Every month, the athletic committee or the buildings and ground committee are looking at, um, waivers and facility use forms for community, um, based organizations and events, whether it's giving tables for the Juneteenth and parking and all of that, but we still have to go back and clean those things up and maintain them. So, it's just really being mindful of that, all right? But not really, um, to the detriment of trying to distance ourselves from the community, partaking in what we have, because it's collectively all about resources, but we are responsible for maintaining it.
Hey, Doc, quick question. Um, I know I may be sticking my foot in my mouth, but, um, is, I know that we have, um, trouble with the city doing their part as far as just the financial piece, but has there been any collaboration with the city as far as like developing a program that incorporates the city as well as the school board in order for the, um, resources to be available for the, um, people of the city? And the piece that, and I understand all the maintenance and I understand all that, but is there any, um, collaboration? And I know the city has been doing their own thing as far as even just a six million, I believe a six million dollars that they, that were, um, down or whatever.
So, we did reach out to the city, um, this week for our second meeting, um, and that was going to be one of the entry, you know, conversations to kind of begin to discuss, right? Um, with them, not just about the financial, um, obligation of the city towards the, the school district. Um, and I want to be clear, you know, I think, um, the school district isn't a, a needy stepchild with their hand out asking for charity, right? And so, we wanna, you know, we're not, you know, overtaxing the, the taxpayers in this town for taxpayers, right? Um, but I think that's part of the conversation that we can move into with the city about some of the shared resources, um, in terms of services that may happen. I think now having Dr. Simmons on board, um, and her well over thirty years of experience as a business administrator and being able to find grants and, and other things is gonna be a, a terrific asset to us, um, working in as, as large districts as Jersey City to T net to, to the light. So, I'm looking to lean on her expertise in, in order to help us kind of navigate that. Um, and I think that would be a, a good platform for us to kind of move forward. So, we have a, um, a new gem, um, to kind of help us move in this direction towards, you know, closing some of those gaps. And I'm looking forward to doing that in collaboration with the city. Because again, it was the board's expectation to create these quarterly meetings, and so we're just waiting to hear back from them, um, on, on doing such, that thing, okay?
Can you put the mic to the, um, computer? Ms. Allsby has a question.
Hold on, I just gotta say something about that needy stepchild comment. I wouldn't say that we're a needy stepchild, but it's like, it's like me being in the same house, raising two kids with different mothers, but I'm not gonna get one Jordans and one Skechers if we all live in the same house.
We're talking Skechers.
Hey, I'm just saying. I'm not gonna get one Gucci and one Walmart. I'm gonna get them both the same thing. So, if you see that they're in need, why not help? Why not assist? Yeah, that's, that's all I gotta say about that. So, if the city has it, why not help? And it's their children as well, it's their kids as well, so why not help?
Mr. Remy, it's politics. Yeah.
Ms. Allsby has changed her mind. Never mind.
Speakable, um, are, are you on speaker?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Um, so I wanted to ask a question that is student center. Um, in regards to the, um, allied health program, has the superintendent, um, considered using doctors from other countries cannot practice but can teach?
So, if I understand your question correctly, I'm gonna hit the, um, the, the speak book, the, the button. If I understand your question correctly, Ms. Allsby, excuse me, Vice Principal Allsby, excuse me, Vice President, I said Vice Principal, Vice President, Allsby, that if we would consider utilizing, uh, doctors from other countries that could not practice here in the U S. I think we are looking at individuals that would pass and meet the standard to teach the course here. So, we're not, um, expecting them to actually practice medicine on our students. So, if they did that, I think, um, we could work, um, with the, within the guidelines of the expectations and the certifications to provide that expertise. And I think that that may be something that we would explore. And that's a great question, so thank you for it.
It is something that, you know, that happens in, um, what is it called? Post-secondary schools. Yeah, they do it all the time. Schools like A C I and, um, other schools, um, in the community, they utilize physicians who cannot practice but teach. So, what they do is they invest in them, they take a course in them and they get a certificate of eligibility.
Okay. It's hard for everybody to hear you, um, Vice President Allsby.
Yes?
It's hard for everybody to hear you. If you want, um, maybe you could type it in the chat and I could read it for you?
Okay, can you hear me better?
Me, it is a little better, but I don't think it's by his ear. Try it one more time.
Hey, can you hear me better now?
Not, not as much, not enough. Yeah.
Now?
Yeah.
Can, can you hear me?
It's as loud as I can get it. Yeah. This is as loud as I can get it.
Let me know if you can hear, hear me.
Yeah, it's as loud as we can, um, it's as loud as we can get it. Try it one more time. Okay, the speaker's on the bottom. Okay, go ahead, try it again.
Okay, so what I was saying is, um, there's a lot of schools, post-secondary schools, such as A C I and others, who utilize physicians from other countries, um, to teach. And what they do is they invest in them, they go to Brookdale to get a certificate of eligibility, and then they teach in, you know, whatever school setting, whether it's post-secondary, high school. So, there, there are, uh, options.
Uh, again, thank you, Ms. Allsby. I think, um, as long as the individuals meet the criteria for the C T E, um, in which they are, we're intended to employ them, uh, we'll take a look at any and all candidates. But thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Adams, quick question, man, just to, um, go off of Mrs. Day's comment, and I understand we have a problem with the allied, um, program. Have we looked into, um, the National Negro Association of Nurses? Because I know, because I know the president of that organization, I'm very, um, close with her. Um, have we looked into that option or no?
Actually, both, uh, Dr. Gibson and Mr. Ruiz reached out to them back in the summer and solicited their support, um, for any known, um, individuals that met the C T E requirement. Um, and so, we'll follow back up with them again. Um, but at the time of them both individually reaching out, um, they did not have any individuals.
Okay, the short version. Uh, the curriculum, the curriculum instructions committee met last Wednesday. Uh, we had a very, um, long agenda, but I'm gonna give you the short portion, what I feel is my, uh, most important point. And if I miss something, I'm gonna ask Mr. Ruiz if he would, uh, bring it up. One of the things we, uh, discussed was a twenty-three, twenty-four partnership with New Jersey Virtual School for Asbury Park High School Credit Recovery for students in grades ten to twelve, at a total cost of thirty thousand dollars to the school district. I asked for an update on this, uh, program, and I understand, uh, a lot of kids participated, I think about a hundred kids, uh, participated in a credit recovery. So, I was pretty happy about that. And we also discussed a self and match system to provide a simple comprehensive system that teaches self-monitoring in order to enhance behavioral success. And this will teach kids how to behave, uh, in school, home, and within the community. And I think this is basically for kids who are at risk. Also, I wanted to bring this up, and I know Barbara will appreciate this, the science fair. We intend to do the science fair again for this... again for this school year. And I must say, last year I participated as one of the judges. And it was a fantastic experience. So I hope I did such a good job that they'll invite me to be a judge again for this school year. We also, let's see here, since I'm reading the short version. Okay, we're asking the board to approve the Young Masterminds with Asbury Park Schools District through Interface Neighbors Art Center, which offers a mindset and personal development training, which will help enhance the student's educational experience and development of a healthy mindset to assist the individual student in their next step beyond high school graduation. And this will be done through Interface Neighbors Career Exploration at no cost to the school district. And that concludes my report. Mr. Ruiz?
I think you covered most of it. If anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
For policy, you see there's a sec, well, second reading, I think, is a threat assessment team. And you also see the new sick leave policy that is in line with the new legislation that passed. And right now, the administration is going over present policy and regulation and some of the items that we follow here in the school district to make sure we're in compliance. And that's it on policy for this month. There is an alert coming out, so we'll be bogged down with a hefty list of policies probably next month or the following month. Finance Committee, Mr. Grillo stole my thunder and went over the Esther funds. And other than that, there wasn't too much to discuss in that realm. And that's my report.
I did, I did bring up one other thing. I sent the B.A. a article on grants. Did we look into whether those were some hefty after-school grants that were elicited? Did we apply for those?
Yes, we did disseminate the information, and the staff has been asked to look into it. To see if we could apply for the grants that the link that you provided for us.
Yeah, it's, it looked like they were already in the process. So as quickly as you can get us this information, that was some great programs that were in there that had a substantial amount for after-school programs, which I think we definitely need. So please, definitely, you know, get us an email and let us know as quickly as possible.
Excuse me, Mr. Rogers, I have directed the B.A. as well as our grants person to complete the information for the grant for the after-school program that was forwarded. The deadline is not until October, and so we do have time. I will update the board as they update me about my directives to them on the grant application and if the feasibility of us getting it. Okay? Thank you.
Athletic Committee met on Tuesday, August the fifteenth. We had a couple updates with the fall sports. We're scheduling an interview for the assistant football coach position. We also rescheduled the interview for the strength and conditioning coach position. All fall sports eligibility is currently ongoing for the high school and also with the middle school students who signed up for sports participation, who were sent to Mr. Medina determining eligibility. We also made a recommendation that with the sports, with the positions, that we should start requesting or some, getting applications out sooner than just a couple months before the season starts. Because right now, we're going into the season, other teams, other schools already started practices and strength and conditioning and everything, and we're still here trying to find coaches. So feels though we should do it maybe before the school year ends or right before the summer or whatever, just sooner than later. And we also discussed homecoming as well. We all got the update that homecoming is postponed. So remember when I wrote the email? Well, it's that cancel, if you wanna get technical.
No, technically, that's not.
The parade is, we're not having a parade. I know that.
I thought we weren't having a parade to begin with.
So because this is all public record, I want to make sure that we're extremely accurate because misinformation will be the most unproductive piece. As far as the coaches and the posting of coaching positions, we do that in accordance with the timeline of the fall and spring and winter sports. The posting for fall sports was approved by the board last spring. Unfortunately, we did not have individuals that applied for it. So the postings for fall sports has been opened. Additionally, one of the updated adjustments because of student participation is also looking at cross-country. So we will be not having a high school cross-country team because of the student participation. So that would be one of the other issues, not issues, things that will come before the board in shortly. As far as homecoming is concerned, the initial homecoming date was in September. However, that was not necessarily the wisest or and/or most feasible date. So I have assigned and directed Dr. Howard Morris along with the committee to revisit the date, which would take place at another home game time. And she's working on setting up a meeting with not only the principal, but also the athletic director and several other staff members of the selection of the high school principal, as well as Dr. Howard Morris leading that charge. With respect to the parade, due to permit issues and concerns regarding the vehicles, that has been the issue with having a vehicle parade. That has been the thing that has been canceled. However, the homecoming court and the other activities related to homecoming are all gonna be discussed in the committee and rolled out to the board, as I have already directed them in the last several weeks to do. So I wanted to make sure that that was very clear. Did Dr. Howard Morris, did I miss anything? Dr. Howard Morris, did I miss anything?
No, and I'm not sure if the parade is canceled or you told me to look into it, right? Okay, so I'm looking into it now, and I spoke with Alicia Floyd, and so we're trying to work that out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarification. So I'm gonna read this verbatim now. So it was agreed that the homecoming events, to piggyback off what you said, we agree that homecoming events should be tabled at the end of each academic year to prepare for the upcoming year in the future. So around, was that like June or before that, we should start planning for it so we don't have to go through this now.
The date is October sixth. We did come up with the date.
The new date, October sixth?
Yeah, Miss Fontaine will be sending that out probably next week.
Okay, all right, thank you. And so there was some other concerns though that we had, and I'm gonna read it. Concerns about the lack of participation. It was agreed that vested parties and the community entities need to be involved moving forward in the attempt to solicit greater participation in the school and the community morale. There used to be a big, you know, Asbury pride spirit, bishop spirit, you know, everything, but we're lacking that. I don't know if it's due to COVID or whatnot, but it used to be big, and we need to get that back. We need to get that feeling back, that energy. So moving forward, that's what we would like to see. I don't know if anyone wants to piggyback off that, but the floor is yours.
Can I just say, I wanted to mention, since it's Santa Athletics, there's a wonderful article in the Asbury Park Press about our new football coach and some of the statements from the players about how practice is going. I don't know when they started. So they were out there, pictures with uniforms and things. So if you get a chance to go back, I think it was public, you could see it, you didn't need a subscription, which is wonderful. And it was a very nice article about the coach and some of the players that are on the team. If you get a chance to read that.
Do, Dr. Adams, do we have PTA in each of the schools?
PTA is a separate organization, separate from the school. So I would have to get back to you if they're actually operating or functioning. I know normally during the school year, I forget her name.
Nina Summle.
Miss Nina Summle comes up and talks about that. I know that Bradley has an active parental support, Miss Kelly Steen. That's correct. You guys do? Okay. I know Thurgood does in middle school and the high school. I think that those would be two things that will need to be, you know, reset up, given our district's reconfiguration transition. So those will be two things that I'll follow back up on with the middle school administration. And normally at the secondary, you don't really have a huge PTA involvement. Normally, they'll transition to booster clubs. But I think we, as a district, have really had a very hands-off aspect when it comes to the monetary and planning phase. It's always been a collaborative effort. But however, they've been separate entities.
Well, yeah, and this, if these entities and, you know, that's the thing, one of the board members talked about, is finding entities that are gonna be involved in these planning sessions, if we can also reach out, whether, you know, how they collaborate or financially, but we need to reach out.
So I think the other piece is, I want to make sure that we understand that these are school events, right, for current students. And having alumni come is great and participating. But we want to also make sure that these events are centered on current students. And we do want to make sure that we are having the alumni tent. And that's the reason why I've left that to the committee to make sure that they're reaching out to partnerships and the like within the community to come and support the current student's homecoming. If Asbury Park, the city was having a homecoming, then that would be something different. But this is Asbury Park High School football homecoming. And so I want to be real, you know, clear on the committee will work. And I've delegated that to making sure that they have reached out to community partnerships and those alumni and that they are well represented. But I want to make sure that we are focused on the fact that this is a school-sponsored and school-sanctioned student homecoming.
Just one more thing. I just want to thank everyone who was involved donating helmets to AYF. And I also want to thank the coaches of AYF for all that they do for students here in the community.
That was, I received a call from Mr. Bowers, the athletic director, who received a need request from the AYF coach after looking at the resources that we had because the helmets that we donated could only be utilized in youth or middle school sports. And we had those helmets sitting there. And the need, Mr. Bowers contacted me. I then sent out a communication to the board about the pending donation. I reached out to you as well, Mr. Remy. And we made the donation within about a two-hour time period because they had their first game this past Sunday, and they needed those helmets. So all thirty-four of those young athletes had their own helmet. And I want to thank Mr. Bowers because that was his initiative and his follow-through and his urgency to support the students in Asbury Park.
Any other questions before we go to public? All right, before we go into public participation, our, sorry, Anna West will be saying a few words.
I am, your Adam. Public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on matters, I'm sorry, on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the board president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the board president and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, open up public participation.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sean Halton. I'm a twenty-five-year veteran teacher here in Asbury, and I reside in Kingsburg, New Jersey. I would just like clarification on B5 number seven, that the board approved the charred games and evaluation tool in Rookbridge for the CTE staff members. I'm just trying to find, is it the two thousand thirteen version, the two thousand seventeen? Is it the two thousand twenty-two version, or is there a hybrid made from the district? And follow-up for that is, is there a schedule for trading for all staff of the new, I would say, new Rookbridge evaluation? Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Linda Luneo. I live at Olympic, Second Avenue, in Silicon Valley. So I'm pretty sure that most of you have gotten my emails and I moved here in late spring. Just gonna read this, it's easier. I have packages if you wanted to see all the documentation and the damage that's been caused so far. I don't know why this particular summer happened to be worse than any other, but it did. We've been here since two thousand twenty-one. And typically, the summer is a little bit more, actually, the first year we were here at the school, the soccer field was gone. Which is what we were told when we purchased the house. And we then made some improvements to the house. We put a pool in the backyard. This particular year has been unbearable between the damage that's caused to my home, which is over twenty-eight hundred dollars, two broken windows, two bald gutters are smashed, kids jumping over the fence, never mind the damage that they're doing to the school's fence and the liability that you have there. And I'm nervous for my own liability because when they come over the fence, they don't know if somebody's gonna get hurt. I, if they're on my property now, it becomes my responsibility. And yet, there's holes and metal pieces that are hanging off of that fence right now that many little kids can't go to school. Can't go out there and play. There's just no way to have that happen safely. And the kids do climb the fence whether it's broke or not. Okay, so they are still climbing all over it while it was built. Tried to be a nice neighbor about this, about this whole thing. I tried to talk to the kids, ask them to come and knock on the door. I didn't put a lock on that gate, because there's a double gate there, so that they could open the gate when I'm not home working during the day, and they could go and get their ball. Because I know that's really all they want. And I have to say that there's been no vandalism other than what comes out of that soccer field. The kids that come to my home to get their ball, they're very, they're not always The kids that come to my home to get their ball, they're not always nice, but they're respectful of the space. Nothing's been damaged or vandalized inside on purpose. So I think that's something. But the kids that are playing there aren't just kids. They're people of all ages. And it's my understanding that while I hear that the other schools are locked, this school is not. And it just leaves us all out for a big liability. Somebody's going to get hurt there. I would rather not wait for that to happen. I would rather be proactive with that. This morning, while I came here prepared with all these pictures and things for everybody to see, I see that there was a gate, a lock on the gate this morning, so thank you for that. And if you were around in some time this afternoon, you would have seen the four kids trying to climb over the fence. It's very exciting. But why they didn't use a hole that they could completely go out of is beyond me. They would go in and out of there constantly. Police, who I've called to report numerous things, such as the broken window and the damage that's happened to my locks and fence, they say they can't do anything, that it was an open space. All of a sudden, this became an open space. I'm not really quite sure how that happened. It's my understanding, if it's good for all schools, it's good for one school, and it's good for all schools, right? And this is really for the elementary kids that are here. And I didn't mind living next to the playground, listening to the kids play, you know, out in the middle of the day. I find it very nice. I've raised my kids here. This is our third home in town. Not something that I'm not familiar with. My daughter's a special ed teacher at New Haven, Connecticut. Her husband is a principal in New Haven, Connecticut. And so I know that there are challenges, and I want to be a good neighbor, but I also don't want to be liable or seem too liable for what's happening down there. There are no lights. The police said even at 10 o'clock at night, when we called the other night, they can't make them leave because there's no lock on the gate. If there was a lock on the gate, it sends a message to them that that's no longer a public space. But even though the signs are on the south side, they say no trespassing. There's no sign on the north side. Even though there's a double lock gate, the double gate is locked, the walk-through gate is not locked. And there are several officers that just say it's an open space. That's what you get. And accidents happen, accidents happen. Well, accidents happen, but I have to continue to pay for them. So I'm not quite sure of that. I just don't want an accident to include a child, okay? My pool is only five feet deep, and most kids wouldn't know that. Somebody comes over the fence. Last year, we had two kids in the pool. Police came, they took them out, but they go diving, somebody gets hurt.
I'm sorry, I didn't cut you off, but...
It says 38 seconds.
No, it started over. So I gave you a little extra time. You're welcome to give us pamphlets, and we are looking into the lock situation.
I, last thing, I just want to say, listen, I'm not really sure how this happened, but there's also the fact that your fence is sitting on my property and that retaining wall is actually directly on the property lawn. So while I think that we may come up with a solution together, and I'd love to participate in that and how the school can be open during the day for particular hours, or supervised camps, or things where adults are present, I would be happy to participate in anyway. And my locker for the trees can finish this still sand, but some of these things I don't still consider. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I'll close public participation.
Madam President, I ask for a consent agenda for all items, excuse me. We have a Danielson training with APEA on the 29th. That communication has gone out. It'll be at Brookdale, where we'll go over with a certified Danielson trainer, which is part of the agreement with the district and the APEA, at which time they will crosswalk our expectations for the agreement with the certified Danielson trainer, and that will take place at Brookdale.
He was asking for B5, number seven.
Again, the document that is approved here, which was indicated during the DIAC meeting, that we will utilize the Danielson version that is in our Genesis teacher portal. Doctor Gibson, would you like to add anything?
The Danielson group is an organization that is, has been state-approved to use the tool as a format. We do not use Danielson in its entirety the way it is written here. We crosswalk our own tool, which is based on Danielson. And that four-point rubric has been in existence before I arrived in the district. And so we are looking at moving to the Danielson tool next year. But for this year, we're remaining with the same tool we've been using. And so you will see the training. This is a document in here that's an attachment. That is the training that all the teachers and the administrators received last year. And we're doing another training this year at Brookdale, as Doctor Adams just said. And again, there is no, we're not using a 2013 or 2022 version. We're using the district-approved version of our own tool.
My turn, okay. Madam President, I ask for a consent agenda on all items, B1 through B9, number three.
I'll move it. Go on second, third.
Second. I have a question about B7, number 19, with all the different curriculums. I know that we entered into a partnership with Teach Rock. And is, besides rock history, are there any of the other ones in here a collaboration with Teach Rock?
Repeat that aloud.
Sure. So I'm looking at the curriculum forces that we have, B7 to 19, which, by the way, really awesome curriculums, really awesome courses. I know that we did a, before we were collaborating with Teach Rock, is that, have they had, in what order, have they provided resources for any of these, like rock history here?
No, this is separate.
This is roll call for consent agenda. As you approve it, that's, the whole agenda is being approved, correct? Okay, just for clarification. Mr. Carrillo?
Yes, yes, I'm all right.
Thank you. Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Doctor Penna?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks? Ms. Ricks, sorry. Sorry. Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Alsbe? Did she drop down? Okay. And President Cook? All agenda items are passed? Madam President, I'd like to present the business agenda, C1 through C6. C5, I don't think there's any, C5.
You're saying it's up seven on C3?
It is motion. Do the second.
Mr. Carrillo, you made the motion?
Yes.
Make a second, excluding number seven, all right?
Yeah, so it's a business motion to go from C1 through C6. We'll do a separate motion to go into executive. Do I have a motion? Thank you.
Well, Mr. Carrillo, all right, never mind. We already made a motion and second, excluding number seven.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Carrillo?
Yes, I see, I'm going to use those.
Thank you. Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Doctor Penna?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Yes.
Ms., Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Alsbe? I think she's still out. Okay. And President Cook? Thank you. Motion's passed? This is to approval for the agenda minutes. This is A7.
No, it's A8. I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Minutes A2, number 13A and B.
Yes, A12, 13A and B.
13A and B. I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I have a question. I sent an email about the tally of the votes. I thought that was, it was different. Did you have a chance to look at it?
I did look at it. And we accepted it because all was in attendance. So I think it was one off. So we accepted your changes. Thank you. Any other questions on the minutes?
Three hours. Thanks for discussing that. These are the business of QI.
For the closed session and the ready for voting.
Thank you. Mr. Carrillo?
I am.
Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Doctor Penna?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes, on the regular minutes, extending the...
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
President Cook? Motion passed?
Okay, we're going to be going into executive session shortly. But before we do that, your board policy, from my recollection, does not provide for attendance by board members in executive session remotely. Despite the fact that the policy might be silent as to that, the board can nevertheless suspend the policy for a particular reason. Tonight, we have Doctor Penna joining us virtually.
Thank you.
And Ms. Alsbe was also joining us virtually. Ms. Alsbe has some technical issues, but she may be able to join us again at some point. But my suggestion, given the topic of discussion for executive session, that is personnel, my suggestion would be that the board consider suspending its policy with regard to the attendance of board members virtually for executive session, just for this evening, so that Doctor Penna and Ms. Alsbe can be part of the conversation in executive session. So to the extent any board member would like to make a motion to suspend any policy to permit them to join this evening, now would be the time to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the policy that we've practiced to allow Ms. Alsbe and Dr. Penna to participate in executive session.
I'll second it.
Mr. Carrillo? Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Doctor Penna?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? President Cook? Motion passed?
Thank you. And before we go into exec or have a motion for exec, I see that we have not addressed item, page A2, item 13, to approve the revised calendar for 2324 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
Questions, discussion? Roll call on the approval of the calendar revision.
Thank you. Mr. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Doctor Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Alsbe? This is the motion to approve the calendar for next year, for this year. Okay. So right now, we're doing a vote for the calendar approval?
Can you hear me?
Yes. I didn't hear a yea or nay?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Cook? Motion passed for the calendar.
Okay, so whereas the Open Club Meeting Act allows for exclusion from discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters outlined below, whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education, which discusses such matters made, will make such decisions public when proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore, be that it resolved that Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed exec session on the date, August 24, 2023, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes outlined below. Personnel and to receive legal advice.
And contracts.
And contracts. Motion. I'll move it. All in favor?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the board is going to retire to executive session for approximately 45 to 60 minutes, after which time it will return to public session. And it's anticipated that the board will not take any action, any formal action, in executive session. To the extent the board is going to take any formal action, the board will do so in public session after it returns from executive session. So thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your patience. We're going to make a motion to come back into public. Motion to come back into public.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lazinski? Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers? Mr. Sanders? Saunders. I'm sorry, Mr. Saunders. Ms. Alsbe, Vice President?
Yeah.
Thank you. And President Cook?
So I'd like to make a motion to deny the grievance as it was presented in executive session, uh, to the board by the, uh, APEA. All right. To deny, deny means that you're going, a yes would mean you're denying the grievance and a no would mean that you don't agree, you don't agree with denying the grievance.
This is for denying the grievance. Mr. Carrillo?
Yeah.
Ms. Laz-, um, Lazinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Alsbe? Alsbe. Sorry. And President Cook? The motion is carried to deny the grievance.
I'll make a motion to close this meeting.
Yes.
Good night, everyone.